To live righteously, to do what is right, to guard our words and speak with wisdom. Lord, we ask that you bless each of the individuals here this morning as they make decisions, as they hear different issues come up. Lord, we pray for wisdom, discernment, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Administrator of college, please, in a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Also like to note, Lord, remember our brother died unexpectedly. We want to keep him and his family in our prayers. Start with our public forum. Recognize Ralph Charles Lechner to discuss disallow Homestead for tax parcel 1309C dash zero one dash zero zero seven dash zero one four one eight one five six one, Lucius Street, Mellexon. Sit here. You can come forward and state your name.
Ralph Charles Lechner.
All right. Where's yours?
Well, no, I've got some representatives back here. I'm supposed to be making a presentation. I'm supposed to be here just to represent myself.
Okay.
But the Tax Assessor's Office is going to explain what happened through no fault of mine, what the situation is.
Please state your name and then I'll just...
In business?
Yes, Mr. Lechner came into my Homestead exemption, and as all of our applicants have to do, he filled out a pre-application. This was done in '22 for the '23 tax year, and when his social security number was entered in the computer, it was deciphered as one thing, which was the wrong social security number. Department of Revenue came back and charged him back the credit because his social security number was wrong. The Department of Revenue sends the Chancery Clerk's Office a notice of this. So, and then in turn, the Chancery Clerk's Office sends Mr. Lechner a notice in the mail to come in and appeal it. Well, he just told me he never got the letter. He did come in when he got an extremely high tax bill in '23, but that was in the '24 tax year. In '24, we fixed it on our side, but he failed to go to the Chancery Clerk's Office to complete the process with them. So, yes, it was an honest mistake on our part. Mr. Lechner did, he came in in '24 when he found out he had had the charge back. Like I said, he claimed he never got a notice in the mail, but that's all I can say on our part.
Any discussion?
What did they request?
Just credit him back.
To get his credit back, but he lost. But the Department of Revenue charged him back on his taxes.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to correct the errors.
Motion by Ms. Sack, I mean. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Order approving engagement letter for municipal advisory services with Municipal Advisors of Mississippi, Inc., and execution thereof. Any discussion? Y'all need to say anything to us? Are we good?
Yes, please.
Huh?
Yeah.
Just won't wait all this time, I promise.
I'm not going to let you talk.
So, last meeting, you know, you heard about issuing GOMESA bonds, and we can get into that, but we wanted to discuss another option with you, and that would be issuing a negotiable note where we would go out, we would help the county with an RFP that would go out to banks, and we'd receive bids and analyze those bids and present the best option. And what that would do would be, that'd be a five-year negotiable note. It would allow you the ability to pay it off within that five years, depending on if a bank, you know, had a call feature. It might have a three-year call, per se, you could pay it off within the three years. We wouldn't know until we received bids. And the cost of issuance on that would be about, I don't know, probably half of what a GOMESA bond would be. And in listening to what y'all's desires were, we just wanted to present that other option to you. We're not necessarily recommending that. We just want you to know that that is an option that's out there, and we've kind of put some feelers out on what rates would be, and it would be comparable to what GOMESA bonds would be. So, the difference would be the cost of issuance.
Yeah, also, that's what we...
I would assume that the overall cost would be less in terms, because we'd be paying it out early or quick.
And we could still use GOMESA funds for this.
Correct. This would be a general obligation of the county. You would have the obligation to levy a tax, an airborne tax, if you had to for debt service, but if you have funds from other sources, you don't have to. You just use those other funds. The payments over five years, they're required to be approximately equal, annual principal and interest. And as Stephen was saying, you can make it to where, or you can ask that it be prepayable at any time without penalty. Generally, you'll get a lower rate with some call protection there, whether that's three years or whatever, just so a bank that's committing its funds knows it'll have that income stream for that time. These are, that would be, like, would help you with an RFP to send out. It would need to go out on the county's letterhead. It could be, you know, we'd be the ones writing it and responding to get questions for it. It's very simple process. It requires that you advertise 10 days in advance of a notice of note sale. It's not as long an advertising process as it is for general obligation bonds, so it can be done fairly quickly. I would say about 60 days.
So, basically, if we approve this, y'all will just go out and then give us the difference in the two options, and we can choose which route to go.
Correct.
Still need to engage bond counsel to handle the resolution.
Yeah, you still have your bond counsel, you're still having board counsel involved. There may be, depending on the bank, there may be bank counsel as well. Those fees would not be that high, at least they shouldn't be. And then you'd have validation expenses, and that would be it.
Would the banks probably require general out of here on taxes?
Under that method of borrowing?
Rather than just GOMESA funds, they'd be reluctant to do that with the GOMESA fund?
Yeah, under that authority that they're going under, the negotiable note statute, it's required to be a general obligation. GOMESA goes under a different authority. That's just a revenue bond, so that's not plugging your obligation.
And I guess just for record, so that people will understand what we're doing with the ones maybe watching on YouTube, this is a bond of the monies that we are required to put up front with Corps of Engineers to replenish the beaches. So, this is putting sand back on the beaches is what this bond is for.
Yeah, you would be, Vanessa's using this for the matching funds, of course, requiring you to...
I just wanted that everyone to know that's what we're doing with this bond, is solely putting sand back on the beach and paying it off as fast as possible.
So, the difference between this and the GOMESA bonds with those accelerated turbo payments that you could make is you're locked into the annual principal interest payments, whereas on the GOMESA bonds, there's flexibility to adjust those as needed, you know, but that's not an issue to you.
Yeah.
Right, so the bond would be paid or pledged by our GOMESA money. So, essentially, we have the money. We just have to go and write man in order to capitalize on it.
However, however, if for some reason GOMESA money went away, we would still be on the hook for this.
That's...
But, under the GOMESA bond, it's structured like a revenue bond, so if that goes away, we would not be on the hook with other money for this, and it wouldn't affect our bond rating.
That is true. That is very true. That structure, the way those things have been written, from what I've looked at, they are more flexible. Say, for example, you pledged 75% of your GOMESA revenues with turbo redemptions. That gives you the option to pay it off early, using the turbo redemption feature, it would be designed, but you don't have to. And if the GOMESA revenues don't materialize that particular year to pay the debt service, that is not considered an event of default under that structure. That risk rests upon the bondholders, and they understand that going in. With the general obligation, of course, there's not that flexibility. You have to pay it every year, period.
With that rest assumed, it would be obvious to me, it seems like that the market would require a higher percentage rate for us to issue those bonds with that criteria, which is, they're taking more risks. The bank, on the other hand, if you go out and borrow the money, I guess through the standard banking procedure, that bank has the backing of the county taxes, the general obligation of the taxes, so we should be able to get it a little cheaper as a result of that.
Yes, you get a lower rate with the general obligation, that's true. With bank placed deals, depending on the status of the market at the time, for example, during the pandemic, it was not like this, but generally it is. Generally, the bank rates for bank placed deals are a little bit higher than a publicly underwritten rate would be. So, in other words, if you compare to GO to GO, bank place versus publicly underwritten, the publicly underwritten is going to get a slightly lower rate than the bank place, but the bank place GO rates that we're seeing when we've talked about this would be lower than a revenue bond.
Even though, you know, we'd be obligating general taxes to the bank, we can still use GOMESA funds to pay that off, so...
Absolutely, correct.
There's no, I mean, I can't see what the problem is. We'll still use GOMESA funds to pay the bank off, even though we legally obligated the county to the taxes of the county.
You're not, and with any GO that the county does, the language is always in there that you levy a tax if you have to, but if you have revenue from other sources, you don't have to.
Yeah.
And if we, if the RFP process went out and we got bid, the county got bids in from banks and that were really high, and there wasn't a good option, then we could go back and...
Still go the GOMESA route. Going out and getting these bids from banks does not require you to actually go forward.
I'm prepared to authorize, why do we need to authorize products to go out, the RFP?
We need to engage...
We need to engage...
We obviously engaged us, so then there'd have to be a resolution of intent next, which we'd work with bond counsel to proceed with that.
Steve, how long will it take to pull numbers to get together and get us, say, four states proposals for the Board of Representatives?
Well, you know, this is a public sale, and I feel certain you'll at least get two to three. Some banks will not bid on this just because it's too large for them. So, thinking about the larger banks in the state, those are the ones that are going to be interested. Well, I mean, you do the resolution of intent, which will take board action. Bond attorney will have to draft that, so y'all will have to engage them as well. And then we would publish a notice of note sale and send out the RFP.
So, that would come after.
The 10 days, it's required that you give 10 days from the date you publish to have the note sale. So, that's the day that bids come in. We decide and make recommendations who's it going to be, and so you're talking about two weeks, maybe.
You gotta put a list in time for March 3rd.
How does that need to be worded in motion?
You don't have the resolution yet.
Right.
You're going to have to do it at the next meeting or call a special meeting.
So, we'll put that on the next, on the next.
So, you're going to have to get the bond counsel to draft the...
That's correct.
Order of resolution, authorization for advertising.
All right, so we'll do that for the first meeting?
Gotcha. And then after that, I said, two weeks after that, but just to be safe, say, 21 days.
Okay.
And we should have bids in and know which way to go.
So, we should be able to look at that and be able to come back the 1st of April and put it on the agenda. All right. Appreciate it.
And also, you need to make sure you engage bond counsel, because we need you involved right away.
All right. Order approving the purchase of real property by the Mississippi Coast Coliseum Commission.
Both, second.
All right.
Good morning.
Good morning.
This is the project that y'all are aware of, where we're purchasing the parcels in between Popps Ferry Road Extension and our current parking lot. There were 17 parcels to start with. With these two, when we close on them next month, we will own nine of the 17. Those have been purchased with Coliseum funds. It's about $1,530,000 that we have expended to purchase these properties. That's part of the match that we needed for the GCRF grant that we are requesting. A total project cost is going to be six and a half million. With our million and a half, we have more than met the amount needed for the match. So, hopefully, we won't be spending any more of our money. That's the point that I wanted to make.
And that's going to be additional parking? Is that what that'll end up being?
Initially, that's what it'll be, but it'll give future commissions the ability and give future board here the ability to utilize that property in a lot of different ways, whether it be for hotels, for retail, for parking, for if you ever build a new arena, you might need that land to build a new arena while you're tearing the other one down.
Right. Good. Anything else?
For the record, there's not appraisals on these purposes, but because of the past experience that we've had buying the other nine properties.
It's just based upon that?
Keep in mind, we're really only buying dirt, okay? The structures, we're tearing them down. They have no commercial, they meet no commercial codes.
And there's no problem with that, huh?
As long as they've got prior...
We have a range Marlin that we have paid, and we've not exceeded that range, and actually one of the parcels will be the cheapest piece of dirt that we have bought.
Right, so it's based on the prior sales established as a fair market value.
Correct. Now, some of the ones that we have not bought, they want way more than what we have established as a fair market price, way more.
Any other questions?
No.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion on the consent agenda, items four through 10.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Tax assessor, number 11, order acknowledging receipt of and approving petitions for increases to the 24 real and personal property rolls.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Order acknowledging receipt of and approving petitions for increases to the 24 real property roll as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing and advertising for bids for rehabilitation and repair work to the Gulfport Courthouse parking garage.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Motion carries. Order accepting and authorizing execution of easement documents attached relating to pump station and sewer piping for the ARPA MCWI Superior Lagoon.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing to advertise for bids for the following projects?
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? Number 16, order approving travel as listed.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing and approving the MDOT annual contract for the following use of existing three buses and one van.
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? Order approving payment to MDOT, a total amount of $25,315.60 for one 17-passenger ADA bus.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing the preparation and submittal of application for Mississippi Arts Commission's annual project grant, amount of $2,500 with a $2,500 match, and authorizing the board president to execute all documents.
Motion.
Discussion.
Discussion, why isn't that...
So, our grant, what do we use that for?
Oh, yeah, this is...
Senior Services, that's what I'm...
Is this senior?
Yes.
Senior Services.
Any other discussion?
No.
All in favor? Parks and Rec, number 20, order approving the use of...
Sorry.
Okay. Number 20, order approving the use of Three Rivers Baseball Fields by Coastal Mississippi Homeschool Sports Association. Discussion, all in favor? Order, table an order authorizing reimbursement to the road fund for the following...
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Order accepting the lease with Puckett Machinery Caterpillar Financial Services for off-road dump truck approved for Sand Beach on the January 6th agenda, $89,529.12 yearly amount.
Motion.
Discussion, is that a lease purchase?
That's a lease deal, yes, sir. That's a lease deal, a three-year lease deal, and we have a purchase opportunity. Yes, sir.
Is that in the budget? Is that already in the budget?
Yes.
I didn't see it in the paragraph here.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but number 20, that y'all just approved, about the use of the field, these terms, that's language we talked about before, that says, subject to scheduling is determined by the Director of Recreation Department.
I think the backup says that, but it needs to be...
The order doesn't say that.
Okay, so are we going to go back and say that?
Yeah, go back to the...
Okay, so on 20, tell us what it needs to say.
That the order is subject to the scheduling conflict as determined by the Director of Recreation Department. Otherwise, you're giving them a wholesale right to use it without any...
All right, so we're making an amendment to that? Okay, so do I have an emotion for that?
Motion.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I guess the most problematic would be to reconsider that particular motion and then include that, what you were saying here.
I don't know.
Or a motion to amend, I think.
Yeah, a motion to amend.
So, we're good?
Yeah.
Did we get the votes on 22? Did we vote on that?
Your motion's second.
Okay. Any other discussion? 22, this is the Sand Beach, the dump truck.
Yeah.
Okay, all in favor? Zoning administrator?
Good morning. Zoning recommends concurrent with the planning commission recommendations for case for items 23 and 24.
All right, we have a motion?
Motion. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right, number 25, order directing Donovan Scruggs pursuant to his contract with the county to draft text changes to the Unified Development Code to replace current zoning classifications with new classifications while leaving the rezoning and conditional use process unchanged.
Motion.
Discussion.
I would change...
I'm good with everything. I would just like to make a motion to strike anything on single-family that's less than 7,500 square foot.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
I do have a question where we're going. Is there going to be a rezoning of the current zoning?
My understanding is that it's not.
The way it's going to work is the existing zoning will stay in place. When they come in, when they have to do a rezoning, they won't be allowed to do an R1. They'll end up having to do an R120 or an R113.
What we're really doing is just redefining...
We're redefining the zoning.
And the applicable conditional use permits will still be applicable.
Absolutely. The process remains same. We just have more steps in the ladder to put them on.
But it gives options, too, as far as if something is denied by the planning commission, if there's, you know, steps instead of just denying.
Well, they could, with this setup, they could come in and ask for, say, an R175, which is 7,500 square foot lots. If they get denied, they could come back and ask for an R110. So, it's, it gives them flexibility to proceed forward. It gives us more cubbyholes to push them into.
So, there are some smaller square footages in there, but those are for multifamily. My motion is just to strike anything less than 7,500 square foot on single-family, which I think is what our current limit is now, correct?
Correct.
These four lines, you may have some contingency to tend that that is a change of zoning, not just a redefining, but actually a change of the zoning, and try to argue that you have to do it about that a different way.
That would require public hearing?
You can, I think this is probably okay, but you just be forewarned, you may have some contingency that you may have public hearing to change the zoning. Right now, you have R1.
Well, when he writes it up, I believe...
We're not changing anything right now.
This is just allowing him to write it up.
It's to write it up. When he writes it, we need to look at that.
I think we have to do a public hearing. A full vote once he has done anything.
Yeah, well, you got, you do have to change that, but just wait and see. I'm just looking at it. Yes.
So, do I need to make my motion now or wait until the...
You're just making a motion for him to go ahead and...
Yeah, but I'm still talking about those, striking that.
I think you're right. He's just going to draw it. All you did was tell him...
What you're saying is he's going to draw it up.
All you did was tell him to tell Scruggs that it's going to be 7,500 minimum on our residential, when he draws it, so you'll have to change, look at that.
I need a second.
We just talked...
Oh, a second, second.
So, we have a first and a second on my motion, so a vote on the item as amended, correct?
Right.
Okay, so all in favor is the item as amended. Any notes? Motion carries. Order concurrent with the county administrator on employment is listed on file with the payroll clerk and human resource department.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order designating the Chancery Clerk, Purchase Clerk, or respective designees of Harrison County to receive specifications and bids for the purchase...
We need to take that one off, because it's not a remote option. It's a regular bid, and I'll put it back on in March.
Remove.
Need a motion to remove that item? Need a motion to remove item 27.
Motion to remove item 27 on the agenda.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? 28, order spreading upon the minutes the list of emergency low quote and state contract orders issued by the Purchase Department for January...
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? 29, recognize sheriff's headwinds.
All right, total inmate count for today is 816, 154 of those are state inmates, 42 of those are ready to go. We've got seven federal inmates, 20 juveniles at adult detention facility, eight at youth detention, and all of those are Harrison County.
Number 30, authorize the purchase of Taser cartridges from Axon Enterprise, cost of $12,990.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor? Authorizing, order authorizing the sheriff's office to sell one Glock 17 9mm, serial number C E K G 811 to retiring Captain David Doolong for a fee of $1. Discussion, all in favor? Order adjudicating submission of fiscal year 26 MOHS occupation protection grant application to the Harrison County Sheriff's Office in the amount of $128,917.50.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order approving the subaward agreement between the City of Gulfport and Harrison County pertaining to the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant Program fiscal year 24.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order spreading upon the minutes the personnel changes of the sheriff's office is listed on file with the payroll clerk and personnel, human resource department.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order approving the low quote purchase from Marcus Plumbing in the amount of $34,006.20 for 30 Willoughby 15-inch wide rear-mounted lavatories for the Harrison County Adult Detention Center.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Number 36, order authorizing the disposal of assets per the attached list.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order denying the claim of William Head for damages associated with injuries sustained at the Mississippi Coast Coliseum Convention Center.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? 38, order approving payment of claims listed payable for the tort account.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order approving Harrison County VPN temporary access to Tasha Days, a state employee investigated with District of Findings Office.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order approving Harrison County VPN access to Jennifer Rivera, Board Secretary, for agenda preparedness and assessment.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Chancery clerk. Order approving claims docket for Mississippi Code.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Order authorizing disposal of inactive records listed which are eligible for disposal in accordance with retention schedules previously approved by local government... accordance with retention schedules previously approved by local government records committee adopted by the Board of Supervisors.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Order accepting award for the Chancery Clerk's Office from the Mississippi Department of Archives and History for the local government records grant, the amount of $10,000 with a 20% match.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Order approving payment for the following claims.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Board agenda. Order, order approving travel for Assistant District Attorney Dustin Uselton to attend the Child First Mississippi Forensic Interview Training located at Children's Advocacy Centers of Mississippi in Jackson, February 24th through 28th.
Motion.
Discussion. All in favor? Order concurring with and approving resolutions of the Harrison County Development Commission is listed below.
Motion.
Second. Discussion, only one that, the last one, the backup and reference to the Development Commission's resolution as well as signatures by its president and secretary, but not, there were no signatures on, on our backup, if you don't have
I missed Mr. Yell, and apparently they were dropped on Friday.
They were.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Hold on, second.
Hold on, that's
These, these Freeport warehouse licenses cannot be done by curating and approving resolutions. The Board has to, only the Board has authority to approve those warehouses, these resolutions. If any of the Freeport warehouse have to be a finding by the Board, do you have those resolutions?
I have, I can bring them aside, yes, sir.
So, those need to be voted on separately. A. B.
So do I need to read All but the last one, I think, you know.
Okay.
So do I need to read each one of those individually?
Yes, the Board, the Board has to make a finding, all you've got here is a resolution by Harrison County Development.
So I'll just call 45A, B, C, and D? So 45A, resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission acknowledging in support of a five-year renewal of Comore's Freeport Warehouse License.
And the Board finds that they're qualified to receive that exemption.
And the Board finds that they're qualified to receive that exemption.
And I assume we, we made that determination by papers that are submitted to the Chancery to the
To the Chancery
To the Assessor To the Assessor's Office, that they are meeting the statutory requirements of shipment out of the state.
That's correct.
And I'll support it.
Okay, need a motion?
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? 45B, resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission acknowledging in support for a five-year renewal of Gulf Coach Pre-Stress Company's Freeport Warehouse License is authorized by Mississippi Code.
And the Board finds
And the Board finds that they're qualified
To warehouse.
For the warehouse exemption.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? 45C, resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission acknowledging in support for a five-year renewal of Suprema Inc.'s Freeport Warehouse License, and the Board finds that they're qualified to meet this exemption.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? 45D, resolution of the Harrison County Development Commission acknowledging that Keith Huber Corporation has properly fulfilled our requirements of the Mississippi Code for exemption from ad lourum taxes for expansion of its facility.
Motion.
Second.
Do I need to say that?
That's not Freeport.
Oh, not Freeport, that's
On the last one, the E, the, why did the commission decide not to buy that back after Hill Park, the E, the, you call?
That one I'm not as familiar with, but what Bill said is Jenkins is selling it to the new owner, and that that's to protect them from selling it again.
Okay, um, and so I don't need to, we've already
But that's, you already really approved those, those
Okay, okay, so we're good?
Incurr, incur with it.
Okay.
Only the Freeport warehouse and the Freeport, finding by the Board.
Thank you. 47, order approving the filming on Harrison County property for the following.
Motion.
Second. Discussion. All in favor? Order acknowledging receipt of updated scope of work from the focus group, including